You, boss. So we should go ahead and we haven't heard from Elaine, I assume. Okay. So in Elaine's absence, I will call the this meeting of the Williamsburg Planning Commission work session devoted to the comprehensive plan of May twenty second, two thousand nineteen to order. And who is calling the role today?
I am.
Okay. Erin, would you please call the role?
Dr. Granger.
Here.
Boswell.
Here.
Dr. Clea.
Here.
Beth.
Chad Woods.
Here.
Schaller.
Here.
Rogers.
All right. So we have three chapters to review today. And we've generally had a presentation and then discussion, right? So we have a presentation first and then great.
So I'll start with chapter three. And I'm just I just have some highlights, some changes that were made following our last meeting. One of the recommendations that came from the commission was to discuss the population chart in a little bit better detail for the city specifically. So this graph was added to the chapter along with the previous slide. The figure kind of shows that growth a little bit more clearly. The when you incorporate the adjacent jurisdictions, it kind of flattens out our growth pattern. The dip in the chart is reflective of estimates and not actual population figures. So their last survey was in two thousand fifteen. We suspect that with the twenty twenty census, that track will probably be a little bit more steep than they're projecting, and that dip will will probably disappear. But we just we don't have any updated numbers since then. So the next item that we discussed was the maps. Both this map and the map that reflects the location of the matures generation was a little hard to read. So rather than change the coloring, I messed with it a little bit, but it it just wasn't giving us enough contrast. I've added the actual population numbers for each one of those blocks. And I think that that makes it a little bit more clear for everybody. And you can see that those colors are really close together because those numbers are really close together. But just being able to kind of break down those geographical areas and and know the population, I think is helpful. And then under the race and ethnicity totals, we had incorporated James City County and York County originally. As a recommendation from the commission, we removed those two other jurisdictions and have a much better representation of the actual makeup of the city proper this way. And it's definitely easier, I think, to read the numbers. Then with the generations, there was a question about what how those generations broke down. So I've added that table three, two, that just reflects, you know, the birth ranges for each of those generations. So that when they're referenced, there's kind of an idea of of where those where those people fall in that category. And again, this is another map that we updated. That was the map that was shown in draft one. And then in draft two, we've added those numbers to it. I think that's all for the population chapter. We received some additional comments, and those comments have all kind of been addressed in the chapter themselves, either just some typos or some additional language. There was a question about the breakdown of gender. And so the best numbers we could find from the College of Women Mary were a report of what the makeup was for the class of twenty twenty two. And the population breakdown is fifty eight percent female and forty two percent male. And there was just that we had a conversation about why there was a discrepancy and why it was being attributed to the college. And I think that those numbers kind of reflect that.
It's helpful, thanks.
So that's that's all staff has to present for that chapter. If there's any additional comments or questions, or if you want additional clarifications, please let us know. We'll we'll add them to this chapter.
I missed the meeting where we discussed population, but so I don't want to add anything more to the to the discussion, except to say, I think it would be good somewhere in here. I've marked it on page three dash six or three dash seven. Something that says, even though it's going to change from year to year, what the current population of the the Women Mary student body is.
Okay.
We can see that they're overrepresented, and we can see that they're over, you know, the millennials bar is huge. But something that just indicates whether it's in that graph or somewhere else. So we we have it as a point of reference, I think would be very, very useful.
That would be that's a very easy number to get.
Great. Great. Thanks.
And on map three, two, and you have a number of generation matures. Does that some of that include boomers as well? You say over sixty five? And boomers are generation matures before nineteen forty five. So that's.
Those are the numbers. I'll I'll go back and check, but those numbers are the numbers that are reflected in the in the census and the American Community Survey. But I'll go I can double check and make sure that that they're that they're not lumping the matures and the baby boomers together.
Thank you. Seemed like a lot of people over seventy five.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Is there anything else that we need to review on this? I think we've been over this one already. So, okay. So chapter four.
That's also me.
Great.
And you'll have to excuse me. I have a cold. So if I start coughing, that's that's I apologize. Chapter four is the community character chapter. And this primarily focuses on the archaeological districts or archaeological areas, the architectural review board and the corridor districts of the city. So the first kind of section is, and I and I didn't break these down by page or or anything like that, like I did previously. But if we get to a section, I'll I'll move through it chronologically. If we get to a section that you have comments on, please just stop me and I'll and we'll make those notes. So the first section talks about historic preservation design review. The map that you see on the screen there is included on page four dash three. There was some numbering confusion with the map. So the draft that you're looking at on your iPad is the most up to date draft, but I found a couple more typos in there. So it's actually referenced incorrectly on the next page. But this section talks about areas of either architectural significance, historic significance. And it also includes areas that are are part of or could be possibly part of a preservation district. So those were all identified in let me make sure I'm giving you the correct year. Yeah, the review board has been established since nineteen fifty eight, and and those were those districts were have been established since then. One of the conversations recently has been reevaluating some of these districts to see if they would still be eligible for national registry. And that could possibly be a recommendation that comes out of this comprehensive plan is to reevaluate. You'll have areas that had been previously identified as eligible, but there is either been enough significant change in that district or in that area that would no longer be eligible. Or if the city sees it moving in that direction and wants to preserve that area, then that might be an opportunity to to recommend those those areas be evaluated. One of them recently, when I met with the the folks from D H R, was the West Williamsburg Heights neighborhood. It's just over here.
So was it D H R that suggested it might no longer be eligible?
No, they didn't suggest it would no longer be eligible. They suggested that if it had been long enough since the last evaluation period, that if the city would like to consider it, we should reevaluate it before we go through with an application process.
Right.
So the next map you'll see is the architectural architectural preservation district and the corridor preservation districts. And those are shown corridors shown in green, and then the architectural preservations are shown in yellow, orange, and purple. Purple's really small on the screen. Staff's not proposing any changes to this map at this time. If if the commission would like to, this is the opportunity to discuss those changes. These are all areas that are reviewed by the A R B. Many exterior modifications to any structures in those areas are reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. And the excuse me. The architectural review guidelines are a big part of the conversation that we should have when we're talking about community character. And one of the recommendations that usually comes out of every comp plan update is an update and a review of those guidelines. Staff has kind of a running list of recommendations and things that need to be updated. We recently updated them to accommodate small cell wireless facilities and solar panels. But there's just some kind of smaller detail things that would be better handled in kind of a a large review and overhaul of of the guidelines. So that would come in in the implementation phase of of the comp plan. But it's certainly a recommendation in this chapter. The last time the guidelines were comprehensively reviewed was about six years ago. Again, stop me if you have questions or comments or notations.
So would you like us to provide our comments as we go through, or or just go ahead and make your presentation, and then we'll have at it? What what's your preference?
It's really whatever whatever the commission would prefer. I'm like I said, the the images we have on the screen are just the maps. They're not the text.
Yeah.
So we can we can come back to it if that would be easier for everybody.
Well, do we want to jump in here?
Let's come back to it.
Back to it.
Okay. So the next section. See, is the there we go. You're kind of backwards. The archaeological protection districts. And those were those were developed out of a recommendation of a previous comp plan. Staff's not proposing any changes to this right now. Could certainly be a conversation we could have. You'll notice right after that in the chapter, there's a whole section on Williamsburg's role in the Civil War that's been highlighted and read. There are no other kind of historic time periods that are highlighted in this chapter. Staff highlighted this specifically because if we're going to highlight the Civil War, we should probably also discuss the Revolutionary War and some other significant time periods for the city. If we don't, then it would probably be best to remove that section from the chapter. Not that it's not important, but it's just kind of it's odd. It kind of sits there by itself. It doesn't really have any context.
Perhaps the quarter path road repaving part might be reassigned to another more appropriate place.
Certainly could be incorporated into the into the later parts of of the chapter where we discuss those individual corridor areas. So we'll go back to this map. So this map is it reflects all the entrance corridors in the city. They're all also you can kind of highlight them by looking at the A R B map. And what I did in the latter part of this chapter was I sat down with Aaron Small, the city engineer, and kind of reviewed the projects that have taken place in each of these corridors and updated them individually. So I'll go through those road by road if that if that works for everybody. The first section was Richmond Road. There really weren't any substantial changes on Richmond Road since the last comp plan update. There still is a section that does not have underground wiring. It's such a small section that I had to I had to ask where it was. And and as of right now, there are no plans to to put that area underground. The next section in the chapter was Monticello Avenue. And we all know that there's some big, big happenings on Monticello Avenue over the next few years. The first big notation is the the multi use trail that was recommended in the two thousand thirteen comp plan is coming to fruition between Ironbound Road and Trayburn. And that's slated to start construction in two thousand twenty, next year. And that will connect Ironbound and Newtown area to the city with a separate off road bicycle facility. It'll have lighting. It'll be it'll be a much nicer ride between those two areas and much safer.
Erin, when you say off road, you're not talking about an unpaved trail. This is still.
No, it's a paved trail, just not attached to the street. Yeah, it actually sits back into the woods a little bit. So there's a there's a very large barrier between car traffic and 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 bicycle and pedestrian traffic as well.
Yeah.
Two directions on that trail?
Yes. Yeah. And so that will connect into the commercial section of Monticello Avenue from Trayburn up to Richmond Road. There'll be a a cycle track that is being it will be constructed as part of the Midtown Road development. And that is an on road facility that's separated by bollards. It's two direction. It'll be on the Midtown Row side of the of the road. So if you're headed into town, it'll be on the right hand side of the road. And that will provide there's there's traffic, there's parking. Right, traffic, parking, the bollards, the bike lane, and there's plantings and sidewalks, and then the building. So there'll be a significant separation, and you can kind of see the width of that area right now. If you look at where Marshall's just opened, there's kind of this large green space. And most of that will be taken up either with sidewalks or bikes or plantings. So that whole corridor will get a complete overhaul with Midtown Rose.
And that goes down to the school of Ed entrance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And then the bikes, the bike facilities will pull off at that point and go through through the woods.
Oh, right. Great. Which one's Compton?
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah. That's amazing. And where will it cross over?
At at Trayburn.
At Trayburn.
Oh.
Yeah. 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 I'm just thinking the Midtown Row is on one side of the street, and the Newtown corner is on the other side of the street. Well, it actually it stays on the same side the whole time.
Everything stays on the same side.
Okay.
But once you get up to once you get up to Ironbound Road, if you want to cross into Newtown, then you're going to have to.
You just use the crosswalks.
And there's a signalized intersection. That intersection was recommended in the previous.
Right. Okay.
So the next section in the chapter is Jamestown Road. And I'll highlight in the previous plan, it talked about a lack of a sidewalk on the north side of Jamestown Road near Phi Beta Kappa. The current redevelopment at Phi Beta Kappa does not include the addition of a sidewalk in that area. Staff still thinks it's important, and so we're we'd like to leave it in the plan. It's not a very long section without a sidewalk, but you still see people they'll just step out onto the road and walk in the bike lane instead of having a having a sidewalk to walk on.
Yeah.
So I'll I'll ask a question. Road resident. Is there any possibility of a pedestrian friendly path up Millneck Road along those curves? Because there are there's just a ton of pedestrian traffic going up Millneck Road from Jamestown and that S curve around one oh six Millneck. It curves back through the woods, and I've wondered about this for for years. I've lived on Millneck for twenty two years now. And there's virtually no shoulder on the outside, and on the inside, it's it's a sharp embankment. We have a steady flow of traffic as far as pedestrian walkers and bikers and joggers. And I don't know whether a wooden elevated trail along there or something has ever been discussed. But
What I planned to do.
A car to navigate that road and not hit a person, they've got to go into the oncoming traffic. Either way.
What I what we plan to do in the infrastructure section is add a sidewalk section to the infrastructure. Erin and I have been talking about is to do maps of the city to show the gaps, the areas of town that don't have sidewalks. So then the commission can see that map, and then I think we need to prioritize what which ones you think are important to build first and have that as part of the comp plan. So I hope to do a whole section on sidewalks in that section so that we can have a good discussion on sidewalks and the lack of sidewalks in certain neighborhoods. Another good example of that is possibly like Griffin Avenue. There's no sidewalk where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. So we're in the process now of trying to do up that map, so we will include that in the infrastructure section. And I think that will be a good discussion on on how on gaps and sidewalk systems in areas that don't have sidewalks.
Great.
Millneck, that that curve is particularly worrisome to me as a resident of of the street. But there is not a way to navigate that in a car the curves without going into oncoming traffic. The rest of the road, you've got a straight shot to where you can see and you can wait. Right, but but the curves are just really scary to me, and I suspect you've experienced that.
Seven miles an hour or or go. I just don't take that road anymore. I go out to the lake for that very reason.
You have several neighbors over there who should not be driving, but still do, and I wonder why they don't end up in the lake.
That's going to be the headline tomorrow or Saturday.
That was him, the guy.
That's right. B O S W E L L.
They're some of my favorite people.
So the next two sections are North Henry Street and South Henry Street. There weren't any changes in the North Henry Street route thirty two, one thirty two area. South Henry Street got a little bit of updating since the last plan. There was the the underground wiring that was installed from Mimosa Drive to Newport Avenue was completed in two thousand seventeen. That's the only only change in that section. Capital Landing Road is going to be a probably a pretty big focus in the next next few years. Thank you. After speaking with Erin, they are proposing to well, it's they have funding right now to to do a study for Capital Landing Road that will focus on underground wiring and a road diet similar to what we did on Second Street. And and it's 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 in a study phase right now, so they don't have any recommendations. It'll focus primarily on the commercial corridor of Capital Landing Road. And they're hoping that any part of any of those improvements will be completed by two thousand twenty five. So by the next cycle of the comp plan, we should have those improvements in place. I think the the study is supposed to be completed later this year. And so after that, they'll be able to go to design and construction.
Do we have any sense of how the development at Quarter Path will affect traffic on Second Street into the city, coming into the city? Is there a is there a well, it's just that's the question. Do we have a sense for how I forgot what the number of units is, but it's in here somewhere. Several hundred new units out there. That's going to clearly be the way that many of them come into town. Some will go around one ninety nine, but I I anticipate Second Street will become. Oh. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's right. That's right. Okay. Well, I suppose it's the same question then.
I think as part of their development, they did a a traffic study.
Traffic study.
Okay.
They possibly have a traffic light at.
Okay.
Battery Boulevard is the main. It's now currently built.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
The next section of the chapter is Second Street. Just spoke to spoke about that a little bit. The big things to highlight in this chapter, that in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, underground wiring was completed on Second Street, and the city did a road diet. It seems to be pretty well traveled and and doesn't seem to have caused any issues illuminating those extra lanes and incorporating some on road bicycle facilities. And those were recommendations that were in the two thousand thirteen comp plan. The next and and there is an extra sentence on page four fourteen that I need to remove because it says that underground utilities should be a future goal for this corridor. We can check that off the list of goals now. Page Street, there was just a small update there. We removed overhead utilities between Peniman Road and Monument Avenue and put those underground in two thousand fourteen. That's the that was the I guess the big change in that area. And then Lafayette Street, the I guess the the big thing to discuss here is the city received smart scale funding for a design for corridor enhancement and underground wiring for Lafayette Street and the Arts District. And that's, yes, will be a study first, and then say projected? Twenty twenty two would be projected projected for construction. So. And.
Out of curiosity, the percentage of of cars that travel on Lafayette Street compared to Richmond Road. The impression I have is that it's a much greater number of cars on Lafayette Street from Monticello Avenue towards Duke Gloucester Street than it is on Richmond Road. That's just my perception. Is that?
Yeah, I can check on the numbers and email them to you. Traffic volumes.
I I think maybe somewhat related to that. I'd I'd be inclined to just amend the first sentence of the Lafayette Street section. We're we're treating it as a corridor, so I'm not sure that the first thing we say is it's not a corridor. You've qualified it by saying it's not a formal entrance corridor, but I'd be inclined to start that paragraph just by saying Lafayette Street provides an important connection between York Street and Richmond Road.
Okay.
And not qualify its characteristics because I whatever the numbers are, I agree with Greg that there's certainly plenty of traffic on there at eight fifteen in the morning, going both ways. Now, that may be commuters rather than visitors, but even so, it it certainly has traffic.
I think the nature of it is that most of that street is residential. It doesn't have much business on it with the exception of the bank.
That's true.
Couple of things on bacon.
Yeah.
So it's perceived as a residential street.
Yeah.
But the car count would lead us to believe that it's really more of a commercial corridor, certainly by comparison to Richmond Road. Again, it's just my perception, but I got to believe the car count on Lafayette Street is probably
Up there.
Twice what Richmond Road is in that area.
Yeah, I'll be.
We can certainly get those numbers and share them with the commission. And then I've I've made a note here. The next section is York Street, and I've made a note here to look at the traffic study that was done as part of Riverside Development and see if any of that needs to be incorporated into this.
Right.
That's everything on community character from staff's side. If we want to go through it page by page and take notes.
Nitpicking things.
That's fine. We need those.
If you refer to Governor Nicholson, probably the first time you should say Governor Francis Nicholson. First page. And then in the introduction to the comp plan, we say that capital was moved to Richmond in seventeen eighty.
Erin, yeah.
Okay. And we want to say it was actually rescued. Williamsburg rescued by the generous support of Rockefeller.
That jumped out at me, too. Yeah.
Maybe a different word than rescued.
I agree. Yeah.
About brought back to life.
It wasn't dead.
Yeah, I would I would dial it back even further.
They'd like to think it was dead, but it wasn't.
That's true. You're right. You're right.
I think I think restored restored would cover it probably.
And then take the next paragraph. I'd maybe leave off that, but but say Williamsburg has continued to grow and change. Period. Since the beginning. Well. It didn't there for a while. It didn't there for a while. That was most of my nitpicks. Oh, no, there's, there's another one. On the, um, Architectural Preservation District, page four-four. Said these neighborhoods include, uh, these include neighborhoods of Braxton Court, Chan, Chandler Court and Pollard Park, both on the National Register. Can you just move Braxton Court down to the end of where it says places in front of Peacock Hill? Because you got, you named three and then say both. That would just make more sense. I didn't have anything substantial to say.
Does anybody else wanna get cranking on this section?
There're just a couple of little commas and things like that. I'll just email those to you, um, like before, but I think, I think the fixing seventeen eighty was particularly important because they cheated us out of two years of being the Capitol.
That's right.
Would you agree to take out the Civil War section?
I would. I think it probably goes somewhere else, if you're gonna put it anywhere.
Well, yeah, I'm sort of, well, I'm of two minds on that one. I, I, I tend to agree. It's the only thing like that in here, and so it feels out of place. At the same time, this is sort of going back to this question of whether Williamsburg is rescued or not. It does speak to the importance of the place throughout the period between seventeen eighty and, and nineteen twenty-six. And so I'm, I'm sympathetic to it for that reason. And I also say that because certainly from my time on ARB, and Andy can speak to this too. One of the things that we struggle with at ARB meetings is, is, um, uh, has been persuading people of the significance of things that survive in town, that are in private hands, that predate the restoration, that predate nineteen twenty-six. So any, any opportunities that we have to emphasize that, I think, are, are welcome. So I, I see that it doesn't quite fit so neatly, but at the same time, maybe there's a way for us to, to reflect some of that language in this, in this document as it is. And if there's another place for it elsewhere in the document, then that's fine too. Sort of related to that, I did have some thoughts, um, or some reactions, maybe I should say, to the introduction where we talk about the, um, essentially the sixteen ninety-nine Building Act that regulates, uh, construction, lays out Duke Gloucester Street, has this sort of geometric, geometric, um, layout of the town, uh, all of which is true and great. And there's something that I think could be emphasized even more. Uh, the, the, the language on page four dash two, where it says Williamsburg has been involved in design review since its founding. I, I do think it needs to be stronger than that, um, and I don't know what the sentence is, but it's something like from the time that the town was established, um, Williamsburg has seen fit to regulate the appearance of its streets and, um, streetscape. That's not the sentence, but some version of that, I think, uh, is right. Because it's clear in reading that Building Act, and going through this made me go back to the original Building Act because I had to. It's clear that they were really concerned about the appearance of Duke Gloucester Street. They were really parents, they were really concerned with, um, the principal public streets in town, and that's exactly what we're doing with the corridor districts, and it's a version of what we're doing with preservation districts. So a way to tie those two things together, um, would, I think, just reemphasize, uh, that there's continuity here, that this is not something that, that we decided we would start doing in nineteen twenty-six, or they would start doing in nineteen fifty-eight when we, um, you know, first set up the Architectural Review Board, that there's, there's a nice continuity here. And I think it's good for us to kind of remind ourselves of that. In going back to the seventeen oh five Building Act, or sixteen ninety-nine and seventeen oh five Building Acts, I, um, let me change the way I start that sentence. There's a few things in the first paragraph that talk about what was regulated that aren't strictly correct, um, so I think we ought to just remove those or fix them. When they talk about pitch in the Building Act, the ten feet of pitch business and the pitch of the, uh, Capitol, they're actually not talking about roof pitch, they're talking about what we think of as wall height. So they just wanted to make sure that the walls were gonna be ten feet high, not that the pit, not that the roofs would be pitched one way or another. They don't actually, let me put it this way, I couldn't find the point at which they prescribe the size of windows. I don't think there's anything in that act that, that mandates window sizes, uh, or the number of windows or anything like that. So I think we might just delete that. And what was the other one? Everything else, I think, is, is good. They did mandate the size of buildings. You know, again, these are all familiar to us from zoning regulations and ARB regulations. And I think it's surprising to some people to learn that, you know, from day one, there were rules about how you, how you built here. And it was because it was the Capitol. It was because it, it was meant to look, you know, distinguished, um, and respectable and different from the buildings in the countryside that were kind of rotting away, um, you know, because they were built without brick foundations, for example. So I don't think we need to rehearse all that, but again, just, I think there is an opportunity here for us to kind of relate present, the present, uh, approach to regulation of design, um, uh, to, to the, um, the founding of the city, right?
I, I, I agree with what you've just said and, and what, what everybody else has said thus far. I, uh, I don't know if something as simple as at the end of that first sentence, and continues, uh, that tradition through today. Various, um.
Yeah.
Efficient, but I think that's right on target with what you're talking about, I think. We have a great city because it's been planned.
Yeah.
From day one.
Yeah, we've been care, it's been important to us from the beginning.
Well, I think the continuity is, is definitely important, and that's what makes that, the Civil War, the, the mention of the Civil War in the nineteenth century a little bit jarring, because it's like, that's the only thing that happened in the nineteenth century, and in reality, there was a lot going on. I mean, the college was in operation until then, and Britton Parish was in operation, and, um, books were being published in Williamsburg in the nineteenth century. People don't realize that, but there was a lot going on. And, and I, you know, I think, obviously, we don't want to write a book about this. It's not history. It's not history, but I think, add, you know, emphasizing that continuity all the way through from, from seventeen ninety-nine through the nineteenth century. Into the Rockefeller period and beyond, I think is, I think is really important.
Yeah, great.
And I think it might not be a bad idea to mention some of the, some of the mistakes that were made in the nineteenth or early twentieth century when there was very little regulation. I mean, you, you can mention that just as a, as a point of reference.
What do you have in mind?
Gas stations on Dog Street.
Oh, well, I, this is a public meeting. I'm gonna, I'm gonna come right out and say it. I, I just got back from San Antonio, Texas, where they have, they have listed all of their historic gas stations. So of all the places in the world, of course, Texas would be one that would be, you know, leading, leading the charge on, um, on making its gas stations historic. But we do, we do have some sweet early gas stations here in town.
The ones on Dog Street are, the ones on Dog Street are gone.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Those still better, they just changed.
That's true. One of them's Apprentice Store. That's a good point.
Yeah, the building is.
Yeah.
The pumps are gone.
Pumps are gone.
The pumps are gone, but, but the point, the point being that continuity.
Yeah.
And, and that, that when you don't, when you're not diligent, um, you know, things, things happen that you, that didn't have to go back and be fixed.
Yeah.
So it's better to plan, in other words.
I had a couple other thoughts, sort of big-scale things, um, but I don't wanna take over, so.
I think the only comment that I have to add in echoing sort of what you all have said is, yeah, just sharing my thoughts on the Civil War section, which I think we've kind of agreed maybe isn't worthy of having its own section, but I think there's definitely some text that could be, you know, maybe more of some of the text about Quarter Path could go into archaeological preservation or something like that. And then maybe some of the historical texts could go into the historic preservation, not quite design review, which makes me hesitant to stick it in there, but I'm not seeing a better place and certainly not thinking it's worthy of its own.
Well, maybe it would jump out less if there were a section on the importance of World War One, right? So the, the development of the, uh, of the weapons station and the effect that had on, um, Williamsburg. Because we do have, it's not a huge number, but we've got a number of buildings that were either moved into town or built. Right, for, as part of the Penniman site.
Or graveyard from the.
Well, now that, maybe it needs to go in the archaeological section. But, you know, one, one thought maybe is what we need to do is kind of call out these sort of moments, um, without three paragraphs, right? But with a few sentences that do testify to. Yeah, and, and that just explain that people were still living here. I think that, that, um, seems to me that's the essential point, and that could be done in a matter of sentences rather than paragraphs.
Do you think it would be helpful to have something more like a timeline as opposed to?
Yeah, I don't, maybe.
Calling, calling out just the Civil War section?
Well, as I say, like, the, the Penniman is significant because, again, we do have some nineteen teens, uh, buildings that really were clearly built, uh, for that. The, the redouts, I think, are worth calling attention to, and they show up in the archaeological, um, section. The fact that some of the buildings in the historic area are in fact, you know, early nineteenth century rather than late eighteenth century, again, testifies to that, to that continuity, um, that there's more here to preserve than the pre-seventeen eighty town. Of course, that's the core of it. That's what we really focus on, um, but there's other stuff too. And I'm, I apologize, this isn't, you know, I don't have a, a clear idea about how to do this, but maybe it's just a paragraph, you know, that sort of fills in the gap between seventeen eighty and nineteen twenty-six, uh, a little bit.
And, you know, I, I, I think that there are a number of, uh, sub- substantial things that have probably impacted the town during the different, uh, wars and, and periods like that. I, in my mind, I think of all the little accessory apartments and, and things that came about because of World War Two, and, and there wasn't enough space for everybody, and everybody was encouraged to maybe open up a, put a garage apartment somewhere or something. And that's how we had so many of them, and now they're, they're not really, uh, in use, and some of them are, and so I, I think that's, that's an important part of our, our history and probably a piece of that with each, uh, little snapshot in time, if you will.
I don't think we're giving you a real clear direction, but I think you have a sense of what we're after.
I like the idea of it being a paragraph or so that's in the sort of continuous with what's already on page four dash two.
Great. I only had a couple more things I wanted to just talk about briefly. You know, one of which was, I like the idea of, of redoing the guidelines, especially if I don't have to work on redoing the guidelines. Having done it at least once or twice, I think now. But I wonder if we just make this, uh, you, you've implied that it's already, it's practice, but whether we just are explicit about every time we do a comp plan, we redo the guidelines. But related to that, it is, it's been a long time since we had the survey, the, the Fraser and Associates survey. It's been twenty-five years, and they were looking back fifty years, so we've now gone half of that time. Might this also be a good time to update the survey? And I recognize.
You just did it.
Oh, is that right?
It was done as part of the, part of the recommendations from the last plan.
Oh, do, okay. Did, did we, did we actually go and resurvey the town or just?
We updated DHR's records.
Okay.
Service.
Right. And so is it still a fifty-year window? So now we're up to sixty-nine essentially. Great. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I, I didn't have anything else that was really consequential. So have we covered community character? If everyone's satisfied?
I think so.
Yeah.
Great.
So we're slightly ahead of schedule, which is amazing. Chapter thirteen.
This is the environmental draft, and basically what I'm gonna do is, there's not too many changes to this, so, uh, just briefly go over what the changes are. On the first page is just basically updating the dates and a couple of little additions to it. On page two, basically, we added the soils map, and that's what you see on the slide on the overhead. And we, we added the, uh, the soil information that's required from Chesapeake Bay and DHR as part of their review. So what happens with this chapter is, once we get this first draft done and get, uh, planning commission's comments, I plan on sending this to the state to make sure that this draft meets their guidelines as part of the comp plan review. And this, uh, soils mapping information was part of their review. On page three-three is the map that you see here and the different soils information. Page three-four hasn't basically changed. This is the map, uh, where I put in here insert pictures, where I roam in the city now, trying to get, uh, neat current photo, photos to insert. We plan on getting, uh, one for open space in here, and again, on the Chesapeake Bay. On page three-five, the Chesapeake Bay regulations, updated that section to be a little bit more clear, and you can see and read what that information is. That's the Chesapeake Bay map. On three-six, uh, we just updated the Chesapeake Bay, again, information and created some grammar on the acquisitions part. Three-seven is basically the same. And what I did with all of this is I had the city engineer look at the information and the wording, and he, uh, recommended some changes to these. On green belts, I added the Queen Mary's Court, since that was a new development since the last comp plan. Page three-eight is on stormwater. There were no changes to that. On page three-nine, there were no changes. Three-ten, just basically updating the, the wording, the verbiage. Three-eleven, the same, uh, we sell credits from the two facilities, uh, Skipworth Pond and Hayes, Haynes Pond, which I added. And credits, uh, the city engineer, uh, wanted to make sure that it was written clearly that the credits from the reserve open space are allowed only for greenfield development, not, uh, redevelopment. So I added that in there, updated the, uh, the information for the stormwater management ordinance. On three-twelve, still more, just minor updates. And on, the map on three-thirteen is updated, the map to include the, uh, BMPs down in the Riverside Development, which are the, the Tutter's Neck Pond, the Readout BMP, and the Hospital BMP, so updated that map. So that's basically the, the changes to the environmental section. It's, was wordage and, and updating wordage and verbiage in the, in the section, basically.
Are there any, uh, nits to pick on this one?
I don't have any nits to pick. I guess I have a, a bigger thought, and I don't know, maybe it's not appropriate for this section. It's a nice change of pace for me. I've been talking to the cha, the town of Shinkatique, where their environmental section is focused on storms and sea level rise and things that thankfully we're not really dealing with the immediate implications of. But one thing that we do see around town is even with our modern stormwater management system, a lot of our creeks are still pretty heavily eroded and cut down in spots, and that means that the, the creek itself, which would have this natural flood plain where you have, you know, wetland habitat and things like that, oftentimes it'll get cut away from that, and so you don't have water flowing over the banks in this area, so you don't get that habitat. And, um, that's a, it can be a combination of high flows and things, and some of it's historical, right? And that, a lot of this is agricultural land, and it's really easy for these high suburban and urban flows to cut into those agricultural materials. I don't know if that's something worth noting in this section, or maybe, and that's why I'd asked to look at the stormwater management plan, was to see if it was noted there that, um, uh, maybe we should be thinking as a long-term goal for the city about stream restoration, which can be very expensive, but, um, you know, some of our peer-sized communities, for example, Ashland is spending a lot of money, I don't know if it's a state grant or what, but, um, a colleague at Randolph Macon is advising from the hydrological side. but um, a colleague at Randolph Macon is advising from the hydrological side and another from the biological restoration project um, there, and so I'm wondering if we maybe look towards our peers some for, for these environmental thoughts. Be not just documenting environmental issues, but maybe being environmentally minded.
So is this a matter of, of kind of getting ahead of an anticipated problem? Is this a matter of um, habitat restoration? What are the, what are the?
Combination of both, but I think at, at an initial level, it might be, and, and maybe Aaron Small is already aware of some of these issues, but would maybe just be surveying and documenting these issues. I know that there are folks in town who are certainly aware of some of these issues and maybe have thoughts about them, and I don't, I'm, I'm not a hydrologist, so I can't speak perfectly to the details of the issues, but I think it's something that, at least if we note that it could be worth looking into and surveying as a first step towards coming up with some bigger plan or augment the existing stormwater management plan. Thoughts?
I'd know he's done some of that, so I'll check with Aaron.
Great.
I think we've applied for a couple of grants, as a matter of fact, for stream restoration.
Hmm.
Uh, so I'll check with him and note that and add that to this section.
Okay, yeah, because it's, that's great, then, if we're already sort of on track to do these things.
Did one on Griffin Avenue a few years back.
Okay. Is that funded by the city?
A little ravine and.
Yeah, Pollard Park over under Griffin Avenue.
And we also, uh, uh, the neighborhood I live in, Councilor's Close, uh, ten or fifteen years ago, uh, than that now, we uh, fixed the, we piped that stream between uh, Councilor's Coast Close and Mimosa Drive, and there was a cost share between the neighborhood and the, and the city on that, so we have done some
Great, yeah.
Restoration, but I think he's recently applied for a couple of grants, and I think he's gotten one.
Excellent.
And uh, so that, yeah, that's, that's a good point, we'll check with him and write a little section in there.
A section could even document what we've already done, because it sounds like those are important steps, for sure.
And then incorporate that into this chapter, in other words.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Great.
Yep. The only thing that came to mind seemed to, yeah, just not be there.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Andy, you're good with the commas?
Yes, I'm good with commas, I'm good.
Um, I don't have anything further on this chapter either, so I don't think that one's in good shape. That's it? That's all that's on the agenda? We've done the discussion, we've done everything but adjourn. Is there anything else that you want us to look at or talk about before we whack the gavel?
We've got our. Anything on the regular meeting?
Right.
Great idea, get ahead of it. All the work session.
Sounds good to me. What, what was the date? That's the, what's the date of that? Scheduled one?
June nineteenth is the regular meeting date.
Yeah.
And there's not a reason for a work session unless you're gonna have a chapter, so you, I mean, you have the, you.
We're looking, if we can't get a chapter.
If anything, we should have updates for the chapters we just reviewed today.
Okay.
Do we need, do we need a meeting just for updates?
Try to get you another chapter, and if we can't do one, we'll have one on the twenty-six, which is the.
Right.
That's our next schedule.
Okay.
I think we should, I don't want to dictate the schedule, I think we should move forward if there's a chapter, I won't be here, but I can do like Caleb did and just make some notes.
I, I agree a hundred percent if there, if there is one, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
We want them, we, they do have lives, so.
Yes.
That sounds great. Um, do we need a formal adjournment? We're done.